This evening, as always, we have Ryan Kaeth from KERM KGOS Radio. So this is being broadcast live on the radio and will be later up on the Internet under YouTube. We also have Cindy Shealy here from the Torrington Telegram. This is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. This is the 14th council meeting of the year and the second meeting in July. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance and I've asked Councilman Shane Victorin to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the mayor's informational items. And I want to announce an upcoming public meeting to be held on Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, at the Lincoln Community Complex Pony Express Room located at 436 East 22nd Avenue, Torrington, Wyoming. The city of Torrington is seeking public input and public comment regarding the potential introduction of a casino-style betting on historic horse racing into the city of Torrington. We encourage the public to attend to gain an understanding of the type of business that is being proposed and to ask questions, vocalize support, or vocalize any concerns that you may have regarding this proposed business. The public meeting will be strictly informational. No action will be taken. We intend to publicize the meeting in the Torrington Telegram, on the local radio stations, and on city media. Please note on your calendars, Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, the Torrington Police Department, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, Goshen County Economic Development, local businesses, and others will be hosting the National Night Out at Jordan Park. There will be activities and entertainment for all ages, a concert, and City Council will hold its first meeting in August at the Shelter in Jordan Park. This event has been very well attended in the past with a great turnout. Again, National Night Out, Tuesday, August 1st, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Jordan Park. I believe we're about halfway through summer. Please continue to enjoy our many parks, walking path, ball fields, swimming pool, and golf course. Please continue to familiarize yourself with the 17 new pedestrian crosswalks that are now along the length of the city walking path. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the July 5th, 23 council meeting as published.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Do I have any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself.
Would move to approve the agenda as submitted?
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the agenda as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the approval of the agenda for this evening is approved. Next item on the agenda is what we call public forum. This is for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. And there's forums up there and they can be placed in that box, black box, for future reference. There are no forums in that box tonight, so we will move on from that part of the agenda, the public forum. Next item on the agenda begins the action items. First item under the action items is item number one, ordinance on third reading relating to the discharge of firearms. Mr. Eddington, could you please read that for us?
It's an ordinance amending and reenacting Section 9.24.030 of the Torrington Municipal Code, 2023 revisions relating to the discharge of firearms, and there are no changes.
In my understanding, what this will do, among other things, is to make it legal for the police department and others who are authorized to use the firing range down near the Baylor property.
That's correct. That annexation is pending and something we need to get resolved before that come forward.
All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Chief Johnson or Mr. Eddington?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the ordinance on third reading relating to discharge of firearms.
Thank you, Councilman Deal. I have a motion by Councilman Deal to approve the ordinance on third reading relating to the discharge of firearms as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving that ordinance as presented on third reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that ordinance is approved on third reading. Next item on the agenda is item number two, catering permit. That is Julie Miller-Harsberger with 307 Sports Bar and Grill is requesting a catering permit for a Zavorca family reunion to be held on July 29th, 23, from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM at 605 East 22nd Avenue, the St. Rose Parish Hall. Chief Johnson.
Mayor and Council, thank you. This is a catering permit for the parish hall. It's a venue that has been used for similar purposes in the past. Julie and Charlie are here tonight and happy to answer any questions. Julie and I met and laid out a set of expectations for managing the event that I believe will be sufficient to keep things safe and under control.
All right, thank you, Chief Johnson. Council, do any one of you have a question for Chief Johnson?
Just a comment that the Zavorcas have had these reunions previously that we've approved. There's not been any, ever any issues or concerns.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, I have a question for Sylvia Anaya, our deputy clerk. Fees have been paid?
They have.
All right. I see you're here, Charlie and Julie. Would you like to comment or not? You don't have to, you may if you want.
I don't.
Okay, all right. I would entertain a motion to approve the catering permit in item number two on the agenda as presented.
Move to approve the permit as is presented?
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the permit as presented in item number two. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Patterson. Do we have any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor of approving the catering permit as presented in item number two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that catering permit in item number two is approved. Next item on the agenda is item number three, another catering permit. Julie Miller-Harsberger with the 307 Sports Bar and Grill is requesting a catering permit for a Bluebird Boutique one-year anniversary event to be held on August 5th, 23, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM at 2042 Main Street, otherwise known as 21st and Main. Chief Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an event very similar to one they have previously hosted, probably just the grand opening at the Bluebird Boutique. Again, Julie and I met and discussed a set of expectations on that that we're both comfortable with and are essentially identical to what we did the last time this event was successful. So no concerns, we would recommend approval.
All right, Council, any questions or comments?
Where would the alcohol have been served at? Just in the boutique building or the whole corner of their lot?
So because of the size of the store, they aren't setting up the service in the store. The service will actually be set up in between the door of Bluebird and the front door of 21st and Main. So folks will be able to mingle in the immediate front of the Bluebird Boutique with their alcohol supervised, but they will not be allowed to go past basically where that kind of deck area is there, where they would go back farther into the 21st and Main building.
Okay. Council, any further questions or comments to Chief Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. Chief, I don't believe the Javajar is open on Saturdays, are they?
That's my understanding as well. I don't expect them to be open.
Okay. All right. Deputy Clerk Anaya, has the fee been paid?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the catering permit as set forth in item three.
I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the catering permit as set forth in item three. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the catering permit as set forth in item three on the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that catering permit set forth in item number three is approved. Next item on the agenda is item number four, another catering permit. Julie Miller-Harsberger with 307 Sports Bar and Grill is requesting a catering permit for a 1978 through 1993 Torrington High School class reunion to be held on August 18th, 23, from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM in front of 1500 East Valley Road. Chief Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Met with Julie on this. They're expecting a crowd that does exceed the capacity that they can have inside of the 307, so they'd like to utilize a portion of the parking lot. Julie spoke with the parking lot owner and received permission to do that. I've provided a photo there with a rough marking of the boundaries for that additional space outside. I suppose it's a little more than half again as much as the inside space. Julie, would you say that's accurate?
That it's what?
It's at least half again as much as what the space is inside.
Yeah.
So it will pretty significantly increase their ability to host the large number of folks for this class reunion. There's going to be a service area outside. Essentially, they're closing the drive-through lane and they'll be putting beer sales and probably a DJ right there where the drive-through lane normally sits. The outside perimeter or the liquor boundary will be enclosed with basically orange snow fence so that we've got a nice tight perimeter there. And then what they're doing, it was, my entrance letters didn't come out quite as clearly in black and white as they did in color, but basically the entrance to the outside portion of the venue will be right next to the main entry door into the 307. So one person will be able to monitor that and make, we don't have to have additional entrances and exits, and so folks will just be flowing right back and forth from the inside to the outside venue. And then finally, they are closing the, there's a roll-up door between the 307 restaurant and the bar side, so that's going to be completely closed. There'll be no minors that'll be either in the 307 bar or the outside venue for the duration of the event, which makes it much more manageable.
Is this a Friday or Saturday evening?
Friday.
Friday.
Mr. Mayor, I would assume that there will be monitoring of the back door of the bar, too.
Yeah, that's, I'll let Ms. Julie answer that.
And Julie, we know who you are, but would you state your name for the record?
Hi, Julia Miller-Harsberger. Through the years, we've done outdoor events and we've had bands, but this time it's going to be a DJ. We usually always have somebody sitting at one of all the doorways, so they will be monitored and there will be no minors in the bar or the outside area allowed.
I had a question. Do you know approximately how many have RSVP'd to come?
Well, he said he has right now over 178, and that's not counting like people coming with them as a, you know, a spouse or anything. And I put those years, but it sounds like it's even opening up more to any years of a THS. So, and it's going to be also open to the public, so it won't be just the reunion, anybody else can come to it also.
So there should be a big crowd.
Yeah.
Do you have any concerns about crowd control? I know, for example, that Mr. Estes falls into this era.
We'll make him be the bouncer. Well, we always have Charlie there, but, no, through the years and actually, when I had a band and we had like 400 people out there, we did hire a few people that just walked around and were security. So we haven't got to that point, but I'm sure we will. I mean, we're going to have, I already was talking to my cousin of him sitting at the door, so we're going to have different people around and everything. We'll make sure it's monitored.
Is the general rule of these class reunion things, I don't think, get out of control?
You never know.
They're all aging.
The tenured reunion, they may, but.
No, and right now, our building can only hold 278 people, and that's even with the restaurant area. So, yeah, we wouldn't have had enough room for everybody and so.
All right, Council, do you have any questions for Julie? Any more? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I don't know if I asked you, Ms. Anaya, the fees been paid?
Yeah.
I would move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the catering permit set forth in item number four. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think I heard Councilman Victorin second that. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the catering permit as set forth in item number four on the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, catering permit set forth in item number four is approved. Next item on the agenda is item number five. It is a jurisdictional memorandum of understanding, otherwise known as an MOU, and it is between Goshen County and the city of Torrington for a contract school resource officer program in Goshen County. Chief Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I think you folks are aware, related to a lease agreement, no-cost lease that we did on the SRO vehicle for Southeastern LaGrange, during the last school year, we provided contract SRO services for Southeastern LaGrange in the form of our pro-reynada part-time police officer, Alex Irons. That was a very successful partnership. The sheriff's department and the school district would like us to do that again this year. This jurisdictional agreement is identical to what we utilized last year. However, the mayor made a great catch that this is something that should be approved by governing bodies, not just signed by the sheriff and I, and it makes sense to redo this on an annual basis as we look at that contract agreement. So just asking for your approval prior to my signature and then sending that over to the sheriff for his signature and for the review of the county commissioners. The sheriff and I have emailed back and forth about this and are in agreement on it, and prior to the initial signing of this document, Mr. Eddington and everyone else had reviewed it as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, do you have any questions for Chief Johnson? I have one. That vehicle that was, is, was being used by Alex Irons, is still being used by Alex Irons?
Not right now because it's limited to SRO, the SRO contract duties. He wouldn't use that when he's doing anything over the summer like for our agency, but once we move back into the school year and he's assuming the contract SRO duties, he will continue to use that vehicle.
So that vehicle's still functional?
Still functional, and we got some cool markings on it for the SRO designation and it's been working great.
On the second page, item number nine, it says city ordinance is unenforceable?
Yes, sir.
So what jurisdictions are they going to work under?
So the two legal venues that we operate with are state statute and municipal ordinance. And because we're outside of the city limits of Torrington, municipal ordinance doesn't apply, so if Officer Irons ends up needing to take enforcement action at either Southeast or LaGrange, he would not be able to utilize municipal ordinance because it is outside the city, so he would need to rely on state statute and state statute alone.
Okay. County ordinances, too?
The county doesn't really have ordinances. They're governed under statute, so they're tied to just utilizing state statute.
And he is not involved in school disciplinary issues, right? That's up to the school.
Yeah, and I mean, if you look across the country at places where police departments have gotten themselves in trouble with their school resource officer programs, that's usually the common failure. And so you'll see another contract coming up in a couple of minutes related to our agreement with the school district, and that's something that we make emphatically clear. We don't take part in school discipline unless there's an allegation of a crime or a concern of safety.
Just to, if something were to happen in the unlikely event that something would happen to Officer Irons, would we have to relook at the contract and redo it, or could we say something like officer as assigned?
If something happened to Officer Irons, I don't have anybody else to put in that spot. So, and the way that the statute reads that allows us to make an MOU with the sheriff of this nature, it does require us, I mean, it doesn't have to be the specific name of the only police officer, but it requires you to name any police officer that would be able to assume those duties. So Officer Irons is the only one I've got that I could offer to assume those duties. And that's also part of the contract with the district of if Officer Irons is unable to perform those duties at any point, we can't be compelled to continue with that because we just don't have the staffing to, I mean, I can't pull somebody off of our patrol schedule to send them out there. It'd have to be an overtime assignment, and then we'd have to renegotiate the whole thing to figure out how to make the finances work on that.
Thank you.
And it's also, it can be terminated by either party with 24 hours' notice, so if there's.
That is correct.
And that's, I think, important in case something unforeseen happens, either party can terminate with 24 hours' notice.
That's correct.
All right, Council, do you have any more further questions for Chief Johnson? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the jurisdictional memorandum of understanding that's set forth in item number five on tonight's agenda. understanding that's set forth in item number five on tonight's agenda. I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve a jurisdictional MOU that's set forth in item number five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the jurisdictional MOU set forth in item number five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that is approved. Item number five, that jurisdictional MOU. Next item on the agenda is item number six, another jurisdictional memorandum of understanding or MOU. This one is between Goshen County and the city of Torrington to improve public safety and increase efficiency and effectiveness in providing law enforcement service to all Goshen County residents. Chief Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This is the memorandum of understanding or jurisdictional agreement that has been in place between the Goshen County Sheriff's Department or Goshen County Sheriff's Office, my apologies, and Torrington Police Department. I'm sorry, I don't recall the original date of signing, but it's been in place for some time. There were a couple of items that necessitated review. One of them was related to transport under, I guess it's item number 11. That has been something that the sheriff's department has asked us to do a handful of times just because of their staffing concerns. They're really in a tough spot with staffing, and so periodically they have asked us to help out when they're in a bind. We're happy to do that, but from the standpoint of making sure that we're doing it right and protecting our officers and our community the right way, we'd like to make sure that we have that jurisdictional agreement in writing prior to making those transports. And then the other item that needed to be updated was Exhibit A, which was the list of officers. We had changed in our staffing a bit since the original agreement was, was signed, and so it was no longer accurate. And we wanted to make sure we updated that, so we had a current roster attached. The sheriff and I have discussed this and communicated over email, and he's in agreement with the draft that you have in front of you.
And you all, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
My last communication with him was, he was in agreement with it, so that's what I forwarded.
And I just want to point out, you have a Exhibit B, I'll call it, which is the map.
Yes.
Which shows the jurisdictional boundaries that are covered by this MOU.
That's correct.
So essentially, it's just a little bit outside the city limits.
It's about a half a mile, yeah. There's a couple of places where that deviates a little bit with different landmarkings and boundaries, but.
So just a comment, which I tend to do, I guess, with these sorts of things. These occur throughout the state, but they're not as common as they should be, and I really commend you for getting, you and the sheriff, for cooperating to get this together. It has a huge impact on public safety, officer safety, just cleans up a lot of loose ends and just makes it better for all concerned. And so I thank you for pulling this together this way.
Thank you. I've been really grateful for the sheriff's willingness to work on this, and so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Victorin. Sir.
Is this same type of MOU needed, let's say, if you request the assistance of the sheriff and his deputies within the city of Torrington?
No, the sheriff's jurisdiction covers the entire county, so he doesn't require any additional requests from us to provide jurisdiction inside the city limits. He has that already.
Okay.
So it only applies when we go outside of our boundary. It would apply if he went into a neighboring county, but not inside of our county.
Okay.
Is that the same thing true with the Highway Patrol?
Yes, the Highway Patrol also has jurisdictional authority throughout the state. Forgive me, I think there's some limitations on what types of crimes and mission that they can be assigned to, but generally, they can patrol and enforce anywhere inside of the state.
I do have one question, and I'm not sure it, it's related to this, I'm not sure if it's part of this. I know occasionally with the mental health transports, they have been done to Scotts Bluff County. How is, how is that dealt with as far as jurisdictional issues? Because the minute you cross that state line.
That's a great question. We're going to be very careful not to be taking enforcement action or getting ourselves involved in anything that pops up over in Scotts Bluff. But we still have lawful authority to complete the transport.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't, we don't lose the authority to conclude a transport that was started in our jurisdiction. But our bigger concern would be getting involved in any sort of enforcement or emergency action while we're making those transports happen. We're going to be really careful about doing that and avoid it if we can because we're marked vehicles for transport. We're not in a, we're not in a van or a white Tahoe or anything else. I mean, it's pretty clear that we're in a law enforcement vehicle, and that gets to be a lot tougher.
Thinking like with a Title 25, for example, if someone tried to escape custody and force needs to be used in their, you can get muddy fast.
Yeah, fortunately, the majority of those concerns are handled mainly to Casper and Cheyenne, but we're, we're going to be very cautious about helping out for something going to Scotts Bluff just because we don't have, we're not set up for transport. We don't have the equipment that makes that work well, including vehicles that are comfortable and easy to transport in and that aren't marked. So that would be something we would really need to consider pretty closely.
And that's really outside the scope of this, but.
Well, that is a good question. Jurisdiction is important in American law. And, you know, historically, and I don't think there's a specific statute that one can cite to that the sheriff does the transport, but historically and by tradition, the sheriff transports out of the county. He goes and picks up prisoners, he goes and takes prisoners, and all that's just historically been the duty of the sheriff. So in a sense, I think that if the PD is operating under this, essentially, they're deputized and have the same authority that a deputy does to transport somebody to WBI or transport them back or even to Scotts Bluff and back. So that's.
Yeah, I think the major, the, the most significant risk we would be concerned about on that is just running a marked patrol car in Nebraska, even for a transport. So we have a really good relationship with the Scotts Bluff County Sheriff, and we would, I mean, if, it would have to be a pretty significant need for us to tackle that. And if we did, we would collaborate with him to make sure that we had that safely and appropriately done.
Yeah. And this, this, I will, I would hope is not necessarily the end-all-be-all of this transport question. I know that Chief Johnson has had conversations, as I have, with the county attorney and even the sheriff about the possibility of the collaboration of the county and of the city and even of Banner Health to fund a transport ban and possibly fund regular drivers to do transport, which was, takes funds, but that would be the ideal situation. So they're not transported by law enforcement at all, they're transported by somebody trained in mental health transport.
I, I don't think anybody's excited or happy about the notion of placing folks who have a mental illness in the back of a police car in basically handcuffs and shackles to transport them to a treatment facility. It's not a best practice. It's not something that we think is a good idea, but it's what we have for resources at this time.
Mr. Mayor, chief, this, this memorandum or similar tools like it have been in, in effect four years prior to this, correct?
That is correct.
And, and just for educational purposes, for all concerned, this statute, Wyoming statute 7-2-106 allows for, you don't have to have an MOU if there's an emergency situation, if there's a hot pursuit situation, or if serious bodily injury or death is imminent, then of course, the officer can take action under the statute. But if you're doing sort of the everyday run-of-the-mill stuff, you need this MOU because it just gives you written authority between you and the sheriff who can agree to this, and it's just put in writing, and everybody knows where everybody stands.
Yeah, it, I mean, the part that really probably concerns us the most is concerns or incidents that are coming into or going out of our jurisdiction, because that's really where it starts to get dicey. I mean, from an example standpoint of, you know, if we start a DUI investigation inside the city limits and we have probable cause to stop the person, but we aren't able to get them stopped until they're outside of the city limits, theoretically, because that incident started inside the city and then went outside the city, we are still good on making that stop and pursuing the DUI investigation. But what happens if now there's drugs in the car? Now they resist arrest, well, now we find a stolen gun in the car. Essentially, we started a new issue that's just outside of our, of our jurisdiction, and it makes it a little bit messy. And so having this already pre-established allows us to continue from start to finish and handle that entire incident. Of course, we would notify the sheriff respectfully of what happened, but we, we don't need to go seek additional authority to finish a DUI stop that has those sorts of developments. And kind of the same thing with something coming into the city limits. If we develop probable cause on something that's coming into the city limits and then that person drives like an angel all the way through town, we might be in a tough spot to address a public safety concern for a ready report or what have you if we're not able to work with that. We don't have to be exactly sure of the spot where the line changes, if that makes sense.
And, and again, there's safety in this, in that, in that if there become issues between the two agencies, the disagreement can be terminated with 24 hours' notice by them or by you, by you, by the sheriff or by you. So there's a, a safety valve there if this became a problem.
Yes, sir.
And chief, Mr. Mayor, chief, what is the, what is the, what if the sheriff needed your peace officers further than the boundary?
That would be just fine. So the, the statute that the mayor referenced, the 72106, covers extraterritorial jurisdiction for police officers or for peace officers, I think is the title. And there's a number of different situations where that can occur. Invitation is one of them. So if, I mean, if we needed help from the town of Lusk, we could call the Lusk police chief and say, "Hey, we're really tight this weekend. Is there any chance you can send a couple of officers down to help with a special event?" And they would have immediate jurisdiction as soon as they came down. And it would be the same for us if the sheriff needed help out wherever he could, he could ask or any of his deputies could ask, and we would be glad to assist.
Mr. Mayor and chief, just from my personal identification, is there still a mutual aid agreement between agencies that covers anything like this? I know when I was in the sheriff's office years ago, there was an agreement.
We have a mutual aid agreement with the city of Cheyenne. I don't have any other mutual aid agreements currently. The mutual aid agreement with Cheyenne is geared more towards, they, they are the closest resource we have for specialized services. So if we were to need a bigger tactical team, a bomb squad, those sorts of things, they're the folks that we would call to. And then also, we periodically help them out. And then like, we've got a couple of guys that are going to help, help out with Frontier Days. So that's that.
All right, any counsel, any further questions for Chief Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Torrington and sheriff's office.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal, item number six, to approve the jurisdictional MOU between the Goshen County Sheriff and the city of Torrington by and through Chief Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the jurisdictional MOU set forth in item number six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that jurisdictional MOU in item six is approved. One more MOUs or a resource, item number seven, school resource officer intergovernmental agreement. And this is between the Goshen County School District number one and the city of Torrington. Chief Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the agreement I referenced just a couple of minutes ago related to the contract school resource officer program. This one encompasses the 2023-24 school year. This is very similar to what we utilized last year, last school year for the contract SRO. There are just a couple of minor changes, primarily in that last year, the school district had agreed to pay for a body worn camera for Officer Irons to wear while he is conducting his duties out at Southeast and LaGrange, and they have already done that, so we didn't need to ask them to buy another one. So that was removed, and then some of the terminal, or some of the dates updated to match with the school year. Other than that, again, the big items that it covers are what the SRO's responsibilities will be. It covers that we can't be forced to continue to perform that if we lose Officer Irons just because we don't have the staffing to make that work necessarily, or at least not in our current format. And then we addressed the school discipline issue there as well. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Mayor, I have one question.
Counselman.
Is there a truancy enforcement component to this, or has that been a need?
I mean, theoretically, that could happen, but it, it's not a, not a part of the day-to-day duties of Officer Irons.
Okay.
That, that would be something that would be led more from a longer-term investigation and then involvement with the county attorney.
So according to this, that he might be involved in preliminaries or being notified of.
Sure, I mean, he might notify the sheriff's department or notify the county attorney, but that's not, he's not going to be going to kids' houses and bringing them to school.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's my question, because I know sometimes that can happen.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I noticed this agreement only covers Southeast and LaGrange.
Yes, sir.
Is there another MOU that the school district covers Torrington?
We have a contract, we have a three-year contract with the school district for the SROs that work here in Torrington that covered the 22-23, 23-24, and 24-25 school years. So that contract is still standing through the next, next school year, and that covers the SRO at the high school and the floating SRO at the middle school. That will be renegotiated in probably sometime during the 23-20, excuse me, 24-25 school year, and I'll bring that to you folks for approval.
So we have two or three SROs in Torrington?
Two SROs in Torrington.
Two.
We have one at the middle school and one at the high school.
But they also will take care of the elementary schools as needed.
The, the middle school SRO is kind of a floater, so he bounces out to the elementary schools and checks on anybody else that needs it.
Mr. Mayor, chief, there's a officer at the college, too, is that correct? Is there an agreement there?
We have an agreement for some office space there, and our officers will periodically stop in and use that office space, but we do not have a officer that's designated at the college.
I don't think she's been up there for about three, four years, is it?
I don't know when that terminated. I'm, I'm not sure, that probably makes a lot of sense for the college or for us. The, I mean, having a police officer there during kind of the Monday to Friday, nine-to-five sort of a setup is not usually what they need. What they normally need is more of the later evening hours or working sporting events and those sorts of things. I could certainly see an opportunity there for some more partnership over the course of the next few years, but for right now, we're doing the best we can to support them with our existing patrol resources.
I take from experience that it does not make a lot of sense to have, tie up an option during the day in the college where they are needed periodically, is in the dorms after hours and athletic events and those sorts of things, and those are well-covered.
Yep.
All right, counsel, any further questions?
I do have one further question, Mr. Mayor. I noticed in the, in the contract, there is no clause for the, the actual invoiced amounts to the district. Is that? Is that covered somewhere else?
I'm not sure I understand your question, sir.
Well, it says in clause, let's see here, clause four, the financial agreement, section C, the city will submit a monthly invoice for the costs. I just don't see, you know...
So the dollar, the way that that works, it's covered under subsection D for reimbursable costs. And so, like, Officer Irons doesn't work a fixed number of hours per week or per bi-weekly basis. He has, well, it's by design, frankly. We don't want bad guys to know when there's going to be a police officer at schools. So he shows up very unpredictably, works different days of the week, different times of the day. And so we can't put an amount for that contract in, because we don't know how many hours he's going to work or what days he's going to work or anything else. So what we've done is we've just listed the costs that are reimbursable, and we've listed a maximum of the number of hours that he can work. And then Lynette and her team takes those costs and collates them, adds 15% for an administrative fee, and then sends that bill to the district. And they are much appreciated for their help with that.
Okay.
All right, any further questions for Chief Johnson?
I would move to approve the school resource officer intergovernmental agreement.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve as set forth in item seven, the school resource officer intergovernmental agreement between the Goshen County School District Number One and the City of Torrington. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Victor. Do we have any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving item number seven, school resource officer intergovernmental agreement as set forth in item seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, item number seven, intergovernmental agreement is approved. Next item on the agenda is item number eight. That is award-bid navigational aids, NAVAIDS replacement project. Staff recommends awarding the bid to WJR, Inc., doing business as Robinson Electric of Gearing, Nebraska, in the amount of $454,528.80, contingent upon final approval by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Wyoming Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division. Mr. Harkins.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As the mayor said, we do recommend that council award this NAVAIDS replacement project to Robinson Electric from Gearing, Nebraska. And I will need, in your motion, that you specify that it is contingent upon final approval by the Federal Aviation Administration and YDOT. Basically, this project includes the replacement of the existing precision approach path indicators, which are known as PAFIs, and the runway and identifier lights, also known as reels, and the rotator beacon, beacon tower, and rehabilitation of the electrical regulator room. We had it been opening on June 14th, we only received one bid. That bid was from WJR, DBA, Robinson Electric. The bid amount at that time was $722,634.44. As only one bid was received, our engineering consultant, MC Shaft, contacted FAA, YDOT, and the airport and asked permission to negotiate with the contractor. Through those negotiations, which were granted, it was discovered that the PAFIs could be connected to the existing runway 1028 circuit and power supply, thereby eliminating the home run conduit, power and grounding wire, and junction cans from the PAFIs to the electrical regulator room. As a result of this change, the new revised construction cost was reduced to $454,528.80, significant savings to all parties involved. As always, this contract is 96% reimbursable from FAA and the state. FAA pays 90%, YDOT pays 66%, and the city pays 4%. We do have funding in the fiscal year '24 budget in the amount of $500,000 that was approved, and it's under account 554895. Maybe to preclude some of the questions, I went through the bid tabs that are at the back of Jeff Wolf's recommendation letter. The original bid tab for the $722,000 amount, and then the revised bid tab for the $454,000. What I came up with is there was a significant reduction in the amount of wire and conduit that happened between, you know, the original bid and this negotiated bid. There was a reduction of 25,700 feet of wire and conduit.
Wow.
So that's about 4.7 miles of savings that was realized. Knowing that, I'm happy to answer any other questions as best I can.
You only got one bid, but this was widely advertised.
It was widely advertised, the Casper Star Tribune, Cheyenne, Torrington Telegram, for four weeks. The advertising costs were pretty significant.
Mr. Mayor, Director, maybe I just didn't read it. Is there a mandatory begin and end time for the contractor, for the project?
He will probably start as soon as the notice of award is issued. I believe he has 90, 90 days, depending on his ability to get the equipment and supplies.
And will this close the main runway for any air traffic at any time?
Yes. There will be, as part of this contract, there's traffic control. They'll put up the Xs in that on the main runway as they're working on the PAFIs next to the runway. And NOTMs will be sent out, obviously. The other runway, 220, will be open. I mean, the airport won't be shut down, but parts of it will be as they're working on either end of the runway.
My concern is, is if he begins the work immediately, and let's say Ag Flyers needs to take off on 10 or 28, if they're still able to.
There'll be allocations made for Ag Flyers. We've done that in the past, especially when we had the big taxiway relocation project. So they're more than willing to work with us and the contractors.
Sure.
I don't know whether this is related or not, but in the set of bills this time, there's a bill for DBT Transportation Services. It says quarterly NAVAIDS maintenance. Is that, are these two things kind of related?
Somewhat. The NAVAIDS agreement that you're talking about is for the maintenance of the NAVAIDS equipment that's out there?
So if we do this other project, we'll still have the maintenance contract?
That maintenance contract is, yeah, it's an ongoing annual agreement.
That's like 1,100 bucks?
Yeah.
We have a grant for that.
Yeah.
Oh, we do. Got a grant for the other one, too?
Yep.
Yeah.
Big one.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further comments or questions, I would move to award the bid for the navigational aids replacement project as set forth in item eight of the agenda, contingent upon approval by the Federal Aviation Administration and Wyoming Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division.
Thank you for remembering to put that contingency in.
Mayor, I would second that nicely stated motion.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victor and a second by Councilman Patterson. Do I have any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I will try to state this as well as I can. I have a motion and a second to award the bid for the navigational aids, NAVAIDS replacement project in the amount of $454,528.80, contingent upon final approval by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Wyoming Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division. All those in favor of item number eight as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that item eight, that bid is awarded, contingent upon final approval by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Wyoming Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, approval of the bills from July 6th of '23 to July 18th of '23. This is Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Attached to your agenda were a list of bills, and then handed out tonight was an additional list. I'd be glad to answer any questions this time.
No further questions. I'd move to approve the data bills as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly regarding item number nine, approval of the bills from July 6th '23 through July 18th of '23. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the bills from July 6th '23 through July 18th of '23 as set forth in item number nine, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those bills as set forth in item nine are approved. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Chief Johnson, I know, has a public comment.
I'm sure you folks are ready to be done listening to me talk tonight. I just wanted to make sure that particularly the youngest members of our community are aware of an event that we're hosting next week. We've got our annual Cops and Cones event coming up next Tuesday, the 25th, at 3:00 p.m. It'll be at the Dale Jones Municipal Pool. We partner, well, it's funded by DARE, the DARE funding that we are so generously provided through donations in our community. But we partner with Beach Eld, and they show up in the ice cream truck, and we give away ice cream until we're out. So it is until while supplies last, but we've got a pretty good supply. So we'd love to see as many kiddos show up at the pool and come have free ice cream and hang out and give us a high five. So, thank you.
Having attended that the last couple of years, you can definitely feel the love as you're handing out the ice cream.
You folks are all welcome to come, too, if you'd like. It's a pretty cool event.
All right, thank you, Chief Johnson. Anyone out there want to make a public comment? Seeing none, I will just make a comment. I did, Lance Patch is out, he's our fire chief, he's out of town. But he did send me a report. I won't be detailed with it, it's been fairly quiet. They did participate, EMS did, and the Fire Department did in the recent training on, that was Chief Johnson was in charge of at the local school. I think all benefited from that, and that's good to have those other two agencies participate along with law enforcement. He also let me know that, obviously, at some point, we'll be drying out around here, and the fire danger will go up. Right now, it's down, but it will eventually dry out. So that was basically his report. All right, any further public comment?
I, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Victor.
I think, just piggybacking on that comment, I do believe the fire warden upgraded the fire danger today, and I think there's also a burn ban in effect.
Okay, it's upgraded to?
Stage one. I can think I've got it here if I can find it quickly. I'm sorry, not stage, level-one fire ban. If you'd like, I can provide the details of that, but... So the level-one fire ban, the following exemptions are allowed on private property as long as you follow certain guidelines. You can have campfires contained within established fire range, use of charcoal and gas grills, use of acetylene cutting torches or electric welders in cleared areas, 10 feet in radius. Driving and parking in weeds and tall grass should be avoided. While controlled burns are allowed, they are not recommended. Any planned burns need to be reported to the Torrington Dispatch Center by calling 532-7001 prior to and once completed. Any questions can be directed to the fire warden's office at 532-7952 or 532-0305.
Okay, that's good, and I appreciate you raising, bringing attention to that, Councilman Victor. And so we're on, live on the radio, so that's good information to put out. All right, any further comments from council? I have a young lady out here who wants to comment. And, young lady, if you would just speak into that and tell us who you are.
My name is Camden Resig.
Nice to meet you, Camden.
This is the first time she attends to a council meeting. I told her I was going tonight, she says, "Can I come with you?", and I didn't promise her ice cream before. So it's very interesting to see what you're doing, that's what you want to say? Okay. And she would just want to say hi and appreciate that you're having her tonight.
We appreciate your attendance here and your learning what self-governance is about, okay? This is how we do things in this country.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dad. All right, any further public comment? Seeing none, we have completed the agenda for this evening, so this meeting is adjourned.